I could get my discounted Sizzler, close the Sizzler down.
What about Golden Corral?
Golden Corral, there we go.
Get the classic trailer.
Yes, they did. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to kick this meeting off here and would like to welcome everybody to our council meeting here at 5:15 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 here in the Linden City Council Chambers. And we will first begin, my name is Mayor Carolyn Lundberg and I'd like to welcome all those that are joining or watching online. We will first begin with an invocation by Councilmember Van Broderick, followed by a pledge of allegiance by our youth council leader, Kim Lloyd, if she steps back in, hopefully, and we'll go to that point, so.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that thou has given us. We're grateful for the freedoms of our country and where we live. We're grateful for this wonderful community that we live in. We pray for each of our citizens, for them to be blessed and taken care of. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet in this city council meeting tonight. We invite thy Spirit to be with us, that we can discuss the items on the agenda, that we can be thorough, that we can make thoughtful and wise decisions. We are grateful for our first responders and for all of the staff that work so diligently here for our citizens and for the great contributions that they make. Please bless our employees, help them be safe, and help them be successful in the things that they're asked to do. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'd like to invite Kim to come up forward and lead us in the pledge. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So very much. All right, we will now have our call to order. So I'll start here on my left, please.
Cole Hooley, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Steve Stewart, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
All right, and we will be joined by Councilmember Hoyt here in a moment. He was delayed, but will be joining us. And we do have a quorum, so thank you all for being here. Next, we will have our presentations and announcements, and we will, we'd like to invite our Parks and Rec to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and for the council, thank you for the support for our 2024 Centennial Celebration. As we kind of wrap this up for the year, we had many, many, many wonderful events to which you all attended, and we had a really successful year. And some of the things that we've done may become tradition as we go forward. But we've got two things really that are important that we just wanted to show you and wrap up. We brought the mosaic picture and we brought the time capsule. With regards to the time capsule, we would like to have any input or any thoughts on the last things you might want to put, and I'll call Alan. Alan, bring your list up here. We got a really good historical commission contribution with a good list of some good ideas. And we have the bin of what we have there, but Alan, oh, thank you. I don't know if I can read it. It might be too small. But just briefly, some of the things that we were putting in the time capsule, and just remember, it's to be buried right out here by the centennial bench, where we'll plant a tree when we get it buried for 50 years. And we've got a rock that has, do not open till 2074, that we'll place on top of it. A few things that we're talking about, we've got new newspapers as of this week. We've got, I can't read it, Alan, you'll have to take it down.
Yeah, we've got, oh, yeah, there you go. Newspapers, we've got popular toys from last year. We've got these little wooden coins that people submitted. They wrote little names or messages for the future. We've got merch from this past year, pictures of Linden, what Linden looks like now, pictures of all of our events, a list of all the staff with their picture, parcel maps. We've got just kind of a little, oh, copies of Linden Days booklets. Oh, yeah. The school wrote, like, some of the school kids wrote little messages for the future and some included their picture on it. And so, centennial coins, gosh, lots of, we put a puzzle in there. We've got a 1924 banner, seeds from the Linden Nursery that may or may not be good in the future, but at least it's in there. Yeah, but at least lots of pictures of what Linden is like now and the community. So that's kind of the bulk of it, but truly, we've got space in that, so we've still got some more room. Yeah, copy of the mosaic and lots of fun stuff.
So, we're anticipating, we can bury this in the winter, but we suspect we're going to bury it in February, later part of February. If the ground freezes, we still have an auger that will go through. We're just gonna, this was Alan's idea, just put an auger hole in, pull the dirt, thunk, drop it in, bury it. So, we're gonna put it under the ground, and so I ask council to think on that for the next couple of weeks. I don't know where you'll be in 50 years, but, you know, numbers don't look good for me, but it might be something.
I'll be in the ground next to it.
You want to spot that?
I'll be 115 and expect to be invited and to be grand marshal of the Linden Days Parade as the oldest living Linden resident.
Ever. So, think on that. If you'd like to leave something, your mark on something for later on, we've seen lots of time capsules open and they've been just amazing, that people have history and stuff. So, that's the first thing. And then, the second thing, we wanted to present to the council and ask you where might be a good spot to put up the centennial mosaic. We had 690 about photos submitted.
My goodness.
From residents and individuals. We needed a lot more, so we just filled in pictures of our events and people.
Yeah. Bump it up so you can see.
Oh, wow.
So how many total pictures are there made up in the mosaic, Keith? Do you know? You said 690.
Four, 3,400.
3,400.
Wow.
Twenty. It's got, but the file that we bought is super, super high resolution, and so if you get the digital file, you can go right into your own individual picture and scan it down. So, I don't know if we want to maybe rearrange our mayors to a little bit different setup and set it in here, or where the, over the stairs, or all that, maybe Alex and Adam decide that, where we want to put it. But we hope that will be up for a long, long time.
That's cool.
Pretty cool.
Is there anything that we might be able to answer, questions, or do anything in relation to what we've talked about? Any questions?
When you, when you talk about newspapers, I feel like when we look at time capsules today, they have back issues of newspapers. But I don't know how much that represents our culture today, right? I'm thinking, well, we should throw in an iPhone or, you know, a digital device, but then what do you put on that? And how does that, I don't know. It would be We do have a We could try and capture the digital world, yeah, the technological world that we live in today somehow. I don't know what that's like.
We do have an old phone that we're gonna put in.
Oh, do you? Okay.
I mean, it's older than I would.
A rotary?
No. But, yeah, and I'll take any suggestion on that. Just think on that a little, so we can really capture where we're at. It'll be 2074, and there's, on some of the wooden nickels that we've been there, several of them said, is Jesus here or is the millennium started? So, we'll see what happens there with that situation. But if there's nothing else, then I'll just thank you again for your support and that we were able to have a successful 100 year. And on the record, I want to especially thank Alan and his recreation staff for, you know, the tireless work that they did in putting these things together. So, Alan deserves all the kudos.
Hundred percent. I just want to tell you both, and please pass this along, you guys truly knocked it out of the park. It was unbelievable. And I know you worked to the point of exhaustion during Linden Days, and so we don't want you to run yourselves that ragged again, but certainly, some of those things that you started were really special and really awesome ideas and so creative and everything was, you were like swans gliding at the top, and I know it was Fast and Furious underneath, but it all pulled off beautifully. People have, many people have enjoyed those activities from beyond our Linden borders, and it really did spread a great branding for our community, and we need to probably pull lots of reports on the events on that Placer II software and pull that down and get that data. Would love to do that. But as I talk with, you know, like our 700 North development there and what we hope that can become, you know, that developer, that, those commercial entities, they are really excited how the city and our activities and things can hopefully cross pollinate there. And we, and I've told them, our Parks and Rec are unbelievable, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got, we need to get a picture with you both, because this, this is just wonderful. We need to put it up on social. So can we get you both who worked on this and our council there with, with our new mosaic? And I guess we'll announce to the community where it's going to go when that's decided, but hopefully, we can officially unveil it.
This will have a digital copy that'll go on the website that people can scroll through.
Do you have an index where people submitted and where their picture landed?
Yeah, they can search on the online portion, they can search their name, because everyone who submitted, we put their name with it.
At our time capsules.
Yeah.
You got two kids in there.
No kidding. How are you?
Do not open it until 2074.
Yeah, there's one side that, let's do that side.
Well, that's more readable. Thank you.
Yeah, one side has an extra word.
That's probably a good idea.
No, that's
No, not.
Did I make a mistake?
There we go.
There you go.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of fun. Each picture is an inch by an inch, and so it became this size because of this.
Don't look. Yeah, well, I see a city council.
No.
Have you seen the family picture?
No.
Flag there.
Very nice. Thank you so much for that. And tomorrow, our youth council is going up to the Capitol. Thank you, Adam, for being our driver, bus driver, and we're excited to go. Just another announcement that I was so thrilled about, I submitted a policy proposal to the league, and our council was selected. Our policy proposal was one of only six chosen across the whole state to be a debate topic tomorrow at the Capitol, so.
And what's that topic?
Housing affordability, and it's, I'll send you the whole, the whole, it's a long document, but it's, they're going to be arguing, how can cities, if they density bonus a developer, the allowed zoning, what can be the accountability that there will be a 35% or more negotiated in, for sale for ownership in those housing units versus rental. So, they're preparing that and excited to do that. So, any other announcements? All right, we'll go on to item number four, excuse me, item number three. This is our open session for public comment, so we invite anyone to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda briefly, if they wish. All right, I'm seeing no one there, so we'll move ahead to our council reports. This is item number four on the agenda. All right, you ready to start? One of you want to take on the end here?
Sure. So, the communities that care, I attended the county planning meeting, good information. Also, just a confirmation that our CTC is doing an excellent job, and we have an agenda item today for their benefit as well. The centennial's over, so we're not talking about that. Historical Commission, they've had their first meeting and summarized all the amazing things that they did this last year. And what's so exciting is they're nowhere near being done. There's a lot of great ideas that they're kicking around and elected. We'll continue to have Brett Swalberg be their chair. So lots of momentum and great energy in the Historical Commission. Excited to see which project they land on. They're doing some oral histories, scanning of yearbooks, looking at a revision of the Our Town Book, the Linden Book, and tackling some big things. And then the Tree Board will have their first meeting in February to talk about all the tree stuff.
Great. And the museum is taking donations. I know we'd love to get more historical items, not only for the capsule that are current, but historical items for the museum. And I did come to that meeting with our Historical Commission. They are on fire, so enthusiastic, so exciting. And I donated my golden shovel from the temple. Groundbreaking, thank you. And so, hopefully, we can, I thought the city would probably appreciate that more than sitting in my home office. Anyway, kind of fun. All right, and then we'll move on to Councilmember Broderick.
All right, just a few things to report on. February 1st will be the North Union Irrigation Meeting, which I will attend. February 8th will be the Provo Bench Meeting, which I've asked Lincoln Jacobs, I'm unable to attend, and he is eager and willing to go, so I appreciate his willingness to do that. As we've been discussing some things regarding the cemetery, just kind of an update for your reference, there's been five burials in the last two weeks. And so just kind of get a feel for how that fills in, I guess is the best way to say that.
Is that common for other times? I never followed that enough.
Ebs and flows.
Ebs and flows.
Is that a low number or is that a high number?
Probably higher.
Higher than normal. Juan wanted to make sure, he knew that, so. But, yeah, it'll, you know what determines that, so. Well, number one should be back into service in a couple of weeks, next few weeks, Juan says, and so, appreciate his report and the work that they always do. I guess I will report on February 20th, our kickoff meeting. I will be gone, sorry.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Let's cancel.
You can move it.
You move it the day before.
Where he's at, maybe I want to go where he's at, if he's going somewhere warm.
I think so.
He is, yeah. Usually a dreary cold month. Okay. Thank you so much.
You stole mine. You mentioned the youth council, so.
Well, go ahead and add to it.
I'm not gonna add. We are leaving in the morning, bright and early, to head up to the Capitol, and this will be our third time with our youth council. It's a great experience for them. We have the largest group that we've taken so far, and we will be having a tour with Representative Schallenberger, who's agreed to spend time with them, and that's always a great experience for them, to see kind of the back rooms and the workings within the legislature there. And then they'll be able to hear the governor speak during a luncheon. So that's, it's going to be a great day. They're also going to participate, as the mayor said, in a mock committee debate on their proposal, as well as five others from other youth councils around the state. So it's going to be a great day. We're excited for them, and I'll report back on a subsequent meeting on how it went.
Fantastic.
Hope it goes well. A couple of quick updates. Attended the State of the City event. Our mayor did a great job. She always does. I'm always so proud to be part of the city council when the mayor gets up there and talks. It was held at Trucordia, great new business here in Linden. So impressive, they're building their headquarters. They really are a big company that's come in here in Linden. We're excited about that. Quick reminder on the Fire Department event, if you have an RSVP, please do so, February 6th, from 6 to 8 over there at UVU. Should be a good event. And then also had an update from the PD to, on two events that happened over the last couple of weeks, one here in our city center park, one at Walmart, and our, you know, I'll spare you the details, but I always appreciate how well our police department does. I think Chief's hiding over there somewhere. Thank you, Chief. And that's all I have.
If I can interrupt, because you reminded me of something at the wonderful presentation by the mayor. It was suggested at that meeting by somebody from Pleasant Grove, and I think it was a great idea. We look at, see if we can get the 700 North Corridor called Linden Boulevard, and I'm wondering if, what people think about that and what the process might be to.
We kind of looked at it once, didn't we? Randy?
I don't know if that went anywhere. It would just be approaching Utah Region 3, see what they say, and where it's a state road now. I don't know that process, so I can look into it. Yeah.
I thought it was a great suggestion.
I'd be supportive as well. I know Randy Powell was really passionate about that, and some strong feelings there as well, back in the day when she was on the council.
And it was brought up that they feel like it all being called Utah County Boulevard is
North County.
North County Boulevard is confusing at times for folks. So.
Sorry, Lincoln.
Oh, hey, I like it when you guys talk. But I would also like to echo Jake's comment about the State of the City address. That was, it was super fun to sit there and just relive everything that's been accomplished this, this past year in Linden. And the mayor posted it on Facebook, on the Linden Connections, Community Connections, I forget what it's called, but I'm going to draw a little bit from that. I have the newsletter this month, and so I'm going to try and capture some of that and pass it on in the newsletter. There's a lot of stuff in there. I don't know that I can capture it all, but it was awesome. It was very good. Appreciate it. Parks and Rec, I could always just say what Parks and Recs is doing, and it would fill up so much time. They're so busy, they do so much, and it's such wonderful and great activities. Their Junior Jazz sign up, they have 570 youth signed up for that. The Sweethearts Dance at Walker Farms on February 8th, 6:30 to 8. There is a text service, Parks and Rec, if you're not a part of it. It works really well. It's something that I've appreciated in seeing, you know, what's coming up from Parks and Rec. You can go to their homepage, where they're on the menu, you can drop it down, and it says texting service, and you can sign up. It's a great way to stay aware of what's going on. Jake and I have had the privilege of being able to sit in on some of the 700 North Castlewood discussions. I know all of you want to be there, but we can only have two of us at a time. Mayor and the staff have done a wonderful job. They, I think, are planning to present something on February 3rd, so you guys can start to hear some of the stuff that's going on at that point in the city council here on February 3rd. And Steve, I'm excited about the youth council trip tomorrow. I'm going to go as well. I don't think you can ever stop learning. I always find it fascinating what's going on, even, even though they're all much younger than me, my brain is always learning more.
Legislature's open invitation to all elected council members.
Yeah, but I'm excited to go with the youth council behind the doors and go on those tours. Those are always cool. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. All right, we're on to item number five. This is the administrators' reports. I'll turn this over to Mr. Cowie.
You know, other than what's listed there, the only other thing, just a comment we've received, that it's hard to hear on our YouTube channel unless people get really close to their mic. So this is a pitch to get closer to your mic and speak louder.
So, I've been thinking, there have been, there was a company that I was working for that we had the same struggle, and one of our new executives came in and he put in mics that came from the ceiling, and it was amazing. And I wonder if that's something that would be worth checking into, because then you would be able to, on the recording, hear audience comments.
So these two green lights are actually microphones that are hooked into our sound system.
Okay.
So we would have to try something different and see. I can ask John, see what he says.
It would be cool. I don't know how doable it is, but.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, item number six. This is the approval of the minutes from our city council meeting dated January 6th, 2024. Council, if you've had a moment to review, any revisions or additions?
I've already gave them to Britten.
Okay, perfect. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the city council minutes of January 6th, 2024, and do we
2025?
2025, sorry. Hang on, I'm going to.
There's a change right there. Okay.
That's what I get.
It might just be on the staff.
And we need to talk about the other one.
The joint.
The joint session, and move that that's approved as well.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick with those changes, and seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes pass. There's no consent agenda items this evening, so we will move on to item number eight, and this is a discussion to review and consider dates for Linden Days as it bumps a little bit, the school district timing continues to march kind of backwards in August, and start of school gets closer and closer to our Linden Days, among other potential issues. So, thank you. Our Parks and Rec Director, Heath Bateman, will give us the information.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had some, some comments, and to be honest, it's not been overwhelming, but we have had some comments from parents that the last couple of years we've had Linden Days, the week prior to school, there's been back to school nights the week that we do Linden Days. And so we've been a little bit reactive, but trying to be proactive, and we've looked about the possibility, Mayor Asserson told me my first week I was here, it's the first full week of August is our celebration date. I understand last year for a section of Linden, which is not the case this year, there was a state conference that was a conflict on the Friday or the Saturday. So, the staff and I have looked at maybe altering that just a little bit, and maybe saying that Linden Days concludes the Friday and Saturday, the first Friday and Saturday of August. There's a couple of positive benefits and a couple of things that we're a little concerned about. The positive benefits is, is the first full week of August. There are two other nearby cities that are having their celebration events, which kind of stretches a little bit some of the resources, like stages and sound. And this week, we see that there is the Utah County Fair on that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which could be in the way of this. But then aside from that, I think it's Highland Days. And there's only one city that's having a celebration that concludes that first Friday and Saturday of the year. So, we talked about it, we put a couple of pros and cons. It would give a full week in between school and school starts, unless they move it up another week, to encroach a little bit more. There is
So you're proposing like the 27th, 28th through the, for a second, 27th of July, 28th of July, through the first second.
It would actually start on the 26th, that Saturday.
Right.
Which is part B of the conversation, and I don't think there's any problem bringing it into it right now. The other thing I want to discuss with you, which is coming up, you saw in the council report, was, are we doing enough? Are we doing too much? What's your feelings about what we're subsidizing, what we're doing, the length of time of Linden Days? We want to just bring that before you to see how you feel about that. We haven't talked about that in a little while. So, is there any feelings about maybe even, not a permanent change, maybe trying a little earlier in the year? Anybody have any concerns or want to give us any counsel on that?
I'm fine with it. I mean, I've lived here, you know, my whole life, and I never knew that it was always the first week of the first month of, you know, I'd just wait till we got the magazine, and then I would start flipping through and get stuff. So, I'm not too wedded to that time.
Yeah, and the way the calendar fluctuates, trying to do the first full week of August, it, it really fluctuates a lot, where if we look at the first concluded weekend in August, it might, yeah, and as long as we're not on top of sister city celebrations, it could be a good, a good little adjustment.
Is there any, anybody concerned about the county fair? We don't do anything that competes with them, their rodeo and whatnot.
I believe this past year, the county fair was at the same time as Linden Days, I think, because there were some things that I was asked to participate in, and I couldn't. So I'm not sure how their calendar is set each year.
Okay.
Any thoughts about being close to the 24th holiday there and starting Saturday?
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking about. The worst case
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking about. The worst-case scenario would be just one day off of this. If August first fell on a Saturday, you'd be starting on the twenty-fifth if we followed that. And that's, that's right there. That's bumping into that.
On that same weekend.
But I don't know how many people like, I mean, the summer is the summer, and how many people use the twenty-fourth as a, oh, for any other time in the summer. I don't see it as a real problem. And most times, I mean, other than this, as it kind of moves later, it's going to pull off of that day more. So this is almost as close as it would be.
I feel like if it happened, it would just be an extension of the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Be cool. I like it.
I, I don't like how close it is to the school year. That's literally four days later, school starts, and that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, I don't have strong feelings either way. I think I trust your judgment. And, and there may, you know, I could even bounce back and forth between that first full week and not the first full week. And, you know, leave it to your judgment and let people know early and.
I think, I think in twenty twenty seven, it would be like two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of August. But this year and next year, in fact, let's see, yeah, Adam's scrolling there, and let's see what. Yeah, it would be in twenty-six.
Twenty.
Yeah.
You would start, right?
Yeah, well, we would end on that, yeah, that Saturday, so not until the twenty-seventh. Would we, so we would be to the twenty-fifth on that, on twenty twenty-six. But I'm not looking for maybe a hard, fast rule, but other eight nearby cities would like to kind of know, we kind of work together. But we lose one extra city if we kind of go to this first weekend for sure than some of the, that do it the first full week.
Wish we could just start our own school district or something.
You might get that chance.
I was there.
Too soon.
Did see on Alpine School District's Facebook page, they had a link for a survey asking, and it closes today, for a survey asking for feedback on calendaring. And the current school board is going to set the calendar dates for the next couple of years and then make recommendations to the future school boards on a couple subsequent years. And so just an FYI.
On a component of this that we can't predict, we always get rain that first week of August. But somehow, some way, it's kind of a drought buster, so maybe we should have it go the whole summer, Linden Days, just to help. But I'm curious what weather patterns are like that, even just that week sooner.
There were, I'm, I'm happy to look at the almanac and see the history on that. There were, I think, besides this last Friday on the, Thursday on the mayor's candy scramble, we had like three years that we were wet.
Getting rained on.
Yeah, and it was pretty wet on those three.
If we're going to control the, the temperature and the weather anyway, then we should really coordinate the wind to be blowing this way when the ping pong balls drop from the helicopter. Well, the field might be better than the street, maybe, I don't know.
Well, we did it both, so we should know.
You know, certainly from my standpoint, try it and see how it goes.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it'd be great to try it this year and see what the resident feedback is like.
Okay, if you're okay with that, Mayor and Council, then we'll, we'll set that. It'll be the twenty-six. The twenty-six, we've got a full, pretty full Saturday. And then we'll come around to the first, and the second will be that Saturday where we have the concert fireworks. The second item I've kind of alluded to, I just set the schedule that we usually follow. And there are, there are some events that were in the centennial events, like the ping pong drop, that we weren't sure we were going to be able to do. But I wanted to have a discussion on how you feel about the length of time. It is, it is Saturday to Saturday. I know that there's a lot done in other cities that are only four days. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the money subsidy and what, what we do fundraising versus what the city gives us. And just feel your, feel your, get your feelings on that, a little direction.
Are there any activities that we sponsor and fund that maybe have a lower participation than would warrant the financial support? Like that, that haven't been as successful?
That was kind of my question. And which events require an enormous amount of staff time? Do you have a feel on, on both of those to the mayor's point?
I would think, Alan, I'll take your opinion on this. I would think that the, the Saturday, both Saturdays are, are lots of activities. And the pool day is all hands on deck, but where the pool is open anyway. We only do three or four events on that Saturday. We've got some of these things that cost money. The first concert on a Sunday is pennies. In fact, for a year, last year, I think, we gave them a donation, the band. They weren't looking for anything. But the other, the other Saturday is between, you know, the, the concert and the fireworks and what we do at the pool, that's a pretty heavy day. I think the Thursday rodeo is pretty well attended, and it doesn't cost a ton. We're into stock on that day, probably close to a thousand dollars between the sheep and the steers to rent those. And we've only got the ability to run twenty-five kids on those sheep. So maybe that cost versus use is, is not the greatest. Alan, do you have a feeling about that?
I think that is good, because both Saturdays are big. The parade's big, but really fun and involves the community. There's a lot of little things that could go away that we could filter out. I truly think that anything we do, we could make public participation. It's just a matter of what, what is, what do we really want to hold on to? Centennial stuff we want to carry over, things that have kind of gone the way of the wind and.
Would it be worthwhile for you guys to give your recommendation of these things cost a lot? And one of my, last year, I would see your staff at every single thing. And it's just like, that has to be such a huge drain on you guys. So it's not just the financial cost, but you and your own personal lives and resources, right? But I, I would be interested in what things you think don't give us the ROI that you think might be able to take off.
Some of the things, you know, we're, we have big plans and big expectations here for ourselves. So I don't, you know, there's only five of us, with volunteers. I, I think that it'd be hard to do a lot of the things we do if, if one of our coordinators didn't show up to help us on that all hands on deck. The concert is a ten thousand dollar deal every year. The fireworks is a six thousand dollar thing every time we do it. I, I saw that even towns, I don't know how they did it, maybe sponsors. But I noticed that Santaquin and some of those towns that are just a little bit bigger than us, they've all been doing drone shows. We talked about a drone show. That's, that's a fifteen thousand dollar bill for ten minutes. So, you know, we, we made almost, I think it was about twenty-six thousand in, in revenue this year from sponsors and sponsorships. That would be a little bit lower than that, because one of the, the, one of the sponsorships was in-kind. They delivered pizza to the Ice Cream Night, the pizza place did, so.
My, my notes from Kristen, we made seventeen thousand on Linden Days revenue this year.
Do you know, on our, that's one of the things on our spreadsheet, which had, which had what we, what they approved and what they came in, the numbers ran at twenty-six and some change.
On our spreadsheet, yeah, not including the seven hundred dollars for pizza.
So if all that came in, I don't know, that's the discrepancy that I've asked Chase looking into. Yeah.
Okay, we need to reconcile that.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why I asked if.
So a question I have, just in the spirit of maximizing opportunity, not overburdening staff and running you so ragged, would there be potential for eliminating the first Saturday, making it a, back to a Sunday to Saturday? Because I'm looking at the, which, these are wonderful, like maybe the pickleball tournament is on the final Saturday instead of the first Saturday. And the horse ride could be that first, the, the second Saturday. The five K run, maybe we put that back with the mayor's breakfast morning again. That seemed to get a lot of the runners to come in and flow into the breakfast. So maybe we eliminate the first Saturday events? You're shaking your head yes, Alan.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah.
Let's condense some of that stuff. And the vendors, I know we did for the, how did you think, what did you think of the vendor event that we did for Centennial this year on the first Saturday? Was that worthwhile? Would you want to keep that?
From the vendor's perspective, we've had a couple call Alan and ask him if it's coming back. That was, those were vendors, but it was, it was the first time a try, and we had some help that, you know, I don't know if they were fully in, but it didn't cost us anything to do that.
That could be combined with the final concert in the park day, potentially, could it not? So those were the, the first Saturday things I was looking at if we just eased off the eighth.
That would be, that would still cost us the same, but it could be, it can condense it. So maybe that's two questions. Are you okay going seven days? You want to go five days? You want to go three days? If you're okay going from Sunday to Saturday, we're fine. We're not that overworked. We get to work when people play. And that's not too bad of a gig for us.
But putting it all together is, you work really hard.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not asking for maybe.
So if we went, if we went to like five days, what does that save us or you? I mean, if we squish everything down in five days, then it's the same cost, right?
You have to forego some of the activities at that point, yeah.
We promised a previous council, and maybe some of you were on that, maybe Jake and Van were on that, that we wouldn't put two things on one day. So we had multiple things going. We tried to get everything its own space so they could just come to one thing, yeah. And so it would make, I mean, a cut of events, but that doesn't really bother us either. I'm kind of really looking for just your feel, like, keep it going. This is great. Just to try to figure out, if you said, let's do it in five, you said, let's do it in four or three, we'll, we'll make that happen. Or if you're okay with seven, we can do that.
If I look at the schedule, the Sunday concert in the park, the first thing, you said that band usually does it for free.
Two hundred dollars, I think.
Or very minimal, and that brings out a lot of people. And it's not, I mean, that one could come or go. I know we didn't used to start on Sunday. We used to start on Monday to Saturday, and then it became Sunday to Saturday, and then Saturday to Saturday. So I think what I'm hearing from the council is maybe if you give us feedback, your thoughts of what events really get the most meaningful return on investment, participation.
I can do that, we can do that.
Aren't, aren't a burden to staff.
We know exactly what we spend on each event, so.
And then I think council could give feedback, hey, these are the meaningful events that we think are really great traditions.
Chest turn, it's probably pretty expensive to put on, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ROI is interesting on some things.
So his last point of, do you want to see it continue essentially mostly the same or?
I do.
Shave down just a little bit to give them?
I like your idea of condensing the Saturdays. Other than that, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd want to change anything.
But I would love to see the ROI, right? I mean, I look at some things here, and I say, oh, I could cut that out. Well, that's just because it's not something I do, right? If there's a lot of people that it brings in, and a lot of people attend and enjoy it, and it's, and you know, it carries some tradition with it, I don't want to cut that out. So I would, I would love some feedback on how attendance is, so we can see what the ROI is.
I'm with Steve. I like, I mean, if you did switch Saturday, that's fine. But I like, every week, I just, I mean, every night, I just know my family's going to go do something cool. And it's like a nice pacing, and we go do a discreet thing, and then we're good. So it's not like multiple days of all day you're out and about. So I like it. If you were to copy and paste it, I would, I would be fine.
I, I think I feel the same way. I don't have any strong feelings. You know, for a family of four, like mine, young kids, similar coals, I mean, it's the ultimate week. We love it. And, and so, you know, if you're looking for is, you know, is it good? It's incredible. We love it. And, and if you don't change anything, you're not going to find anyone up here who's disappointed. I mean, you guys do such an incredible job, the bang for the buck, what we were able to do. I get regularly during that week, citizens coming up to me saying, wow, like, this is incredible. You guys do so much, especially the fireworks show. People are blown away by that. But anyways, keep, keep it up. I, you know, and I think we trust, you know, I, I get that you're looking for feedback. I don't know that anyone has super strong feelings. And, and I think you have a, you have a Linden Days committee, right, that starts to meet as that ramps up?
It's been getting less and less of a committee. It's not like it, it used to be. It's pretty much staff and maybe the Loomis Linden, and we will consider them staff and all their parents. Without them, we, all those individuals, we, we'd have a struggle. And then a few individuals who have a little bit of vested interest, Shawnee Rasmussen, she takes care of the rodeo and, and the.
Trail ride.
The trail ride. So, yeah, there's probably three or four key individuals that we work with. That's great. I'm okay.
You're coming on the trail ride with me next time.
He's too busy. I don't think you can go. I don't know if I can partner with him during that time. Okay, that's great feedback. Thank you. And then, lastly, on, on my list, oh, I'm sorry, that was it on that?
Okay, so we're on to item number nine on the agenda. The landscape maintenance contract.
Thank you. I, I asked Brent Gurney.
Sorry, really quick. So we had this as an action item on number eight.
Oh, okay, my fault. Thank you for that good catch.
Can one of you guys take a shot at a motion then on that?
Motion on the date change.
I moved to approve the new Linden Days dates, starting on the twenty-sixth and ending on the second.
Motion by Councilmember Stewart.
Unless you have recommendations to change days.
No, no, I, I just would like to end on the first Saturday, Saturday of August or the first. I don't know how you can say that, but that's good. If it starts.
The majority of the week is still August.
Yeah.
We didn't want a scenario where August first is Saturday. But is that kind of the spirit of what we're talking about?
This is the second, it's as close as you get without being there.
Like to have the concert on the first week of Saturday. I would like it to end on the first Saturday of August.
Which is what I motioned to.
Okay.
Hey.
Yours was a specific for next year.
July twenty-sixth.
Where he wants, you're, you're looking for a motion that sets the concert on the first.
Same work.
First Saturday of August.
That what I said?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Motion by Councilmember Stewart. It was seconded by Councilmember Hoyt or Jacob's Hoyt. Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
I, I was the one that seconded.
Lincoln seconded.
So.
Sorry, you put up your hand, I looked.
I was willing to.
Okay, all right. Item number nine then, our bid award for the landscape.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got Brent Gurney with me from Stratton Abroad slash Elite Grounds, who's been doing our maintenance for twenty-four years, probably. We did an open bid process. I, I invited five companies to bid on, on the proposal that were local and reputable companies. We've had a few that, one told me, no, thank you. I had one that said they would absolutely be there and did not. And then we had the one that was unresponsive, and then the two bidders that showed up. You can see in the packet, I included everything that was in the bid from Elite Grounds. And the maintenance contract price we're proposing that the council consider is three oh eight, three three seven, seventy-six every year for three years. Unless there's a problem, there's two more years that can be executed. We'll, we'll go automatically, is the way the, the contract is written, to a total of five before we rebid that.
I was looking at the bid score sheet, and I was actually quite impressed with it. Do all of those who are invited to participate see this score sheet? Do they know this is how they're going to be graded?
I shared it with both of the bidders there.
That is, that was impressive to see your organization and all those boxes that they checked. And those are some, you know, those are some significant things, talking about training, and it was good. It was good to see.
How does this compare to what we've been paying?
It's up from, we did add a few extra services, but not significant. But they don't change it on us every year. They wait till the five-year mark, and we figured it's about three and a half percent increase since two thousand, when we bid it last. I felt personally, I thought their bid was going to be a little higher. I think that they really liked our business, and they captured, they wanted to capture what they'd done for us. Besides, they're very efficient. And when I met with Frederico's Lawn Care and Christmas Trees, if you've ever seen them down there in Oremia, same family, and, and they won a big award this year from the Municipal Foresters Institute and a bunch of other things. Frederico's, very reputable company. They, when I met with them, I thought they could do the job and do it well, too. They just had some unknowns there that they were dealing with.
Love the material there. It looks like we've got a great relationship, mentioning you as a reference, saw our logo in there as well. Love that it's a win-win.
Which was a little bit funny. I, I didn't know they were going to include that in my own bid.
To reference my own. I like it. You, I hope you called yourself.
There were three others there.
I, I'm super comfortable with this, unless there's any other concerns, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, okay.
In the contract, it goes to eight payments. I double-checked the math, I think we're paying five dollars a month too much. It may have been just a typo. Sorry, I'm cheating you out of 40 bucks, saving the city the 40 bucks.
You know, consequently, I had, we had, I got, which you're getting used to. I got some of the math wrong because we didn't bid some of the things that he had already bid. So when we got his bid in, I added those things in there. And then my numbers for this and for the contract got a little bit messed up. It should be 308-377-76. And that divided by eight is?
The 542, not the 547.
Oh, 542, okay, that could very well be a typo.
Yeah, I think that was a typo.
Yeah.
Another typo right there.
A question, who determines and watches to determine how much we're watering? As we're talking about Linden Days, sometimes we get there and our fields are brown.
It is.
It depends on drought conditions, I know, and we'll be respectful of that, but.
They, we take care of that in-house in our Parks Department. We've, we're, we've brought, we're bringing online all the automatic timers this year that we've got, that we put in last year. In fact, his company, Elite Grounds, has helped us get the clocks up and tuned up. But we control that, how much water. And to be honest with you, we, our, our stance on that has been minimalist on water. It has been that way. So if, if the council would like to encourage an, an extra day, we just have to miss athletic contest days and his mowing days that would determine that. But we have been minimalist on that.
And I appreciate that when we've been in a drought for so long, and I sit on lots of water boards. But as we get close to the Linden Days, I would like us to have green lawns. And, and, and I don't know if that's something you can do, is to say, hey, I see them getting brown. Do you like them that, or whatever? Just provide some feedback with your guys that are out there. I'm glad to see those other things are coming online. We've been working on that for, I think, the whole 11 years I've been here.
Had the internet 11 years ago when you were here?
We used an abacus for some of these calculations.
All right, council, anything else? So with the numbers that were called out, do we need to have a motion? Or will someone review and get those clarified?
Staff report is correct on his, his cover sheet there. And it looks like it's in the agreement that we've just got to correct those numbers, so.
So the motion has 308-377.76, that's correct?
Yes, that one is correct. It's just in the contract portion. When it's made in eight payments, that's the one that's off by five dollars.
So I'll motion to approve with the correction of the contract, the bid award to Elite Grounds.
Second.
By Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Brittany, if you can just go ahead and have the mayor sign that, and then we'll just insert that corrected page with the right amount, so, thanks.
And thank you for what you guys do. They, they look great, appreciate that.
We see him in the early morning pickleball games as they're coming through and taking care of the grass around our pickleball courts.
Doing the garbage is part of the contract that I, that's a daily service, except Sunday.
Wonderful, thank you very much. All right, we're now on to item number 10. This is the CTC agreement amendment.
Jamie, our, our senior coordinator, worked with the county. They contacted her and indicated they had some additional funding that could go towards the, the CTC programming that she oversees. And she came up with some additional programming for some classes and covering, I think, meals that went along with those classes and the instructor's time. And anything else that you guys have to add to that? So the county sent out this updated agreement that provides an additional funding with an added amount. It was $5,000 from the previous agreement, and has to be used through the end of June 30th of this year, so.
Any further questions, council?
She doing all right? That program doing well?
They're doing a great job.
Yes, the programs that are being provided free are wonderful.
They're always, they're always full. Her classes and what she does in the high schools is, with those others, is just amazing. We wish we could have got those vape, vape detectors with the issue that they've, they had up there. But there's, there's so much grant money available for that program. It's just, just amazing. So she's doing well.
I was, I was clicking through the, their webpage today and just looking at the, read their newsletter and looked at everything that's available. And it's just, it's such valuable, right? Education, and especially in those kinds of areas that they're providing that information. We're incredibly blessed to have Jamie heading that up and having all of those programs available for our residents. Those are, those are great programs.
She is, she's unique, and she's vested, has a personal vested interest. And so she, she's, she's a great asset to the city with that CTC program. We can keep the process working between the county, bringing money to us and the city, and making sure we get what we get. We don't have these issues with what her grants are and what are available to the city, and make sure it doesn't grow out of control, so.
Yeah. When I first talked with her about bringing this, about starting something like this in Linden, she's just owned it, and she's lassoed incredible dollars. And she's really magnified the opportunities in a great way, so. And the community is really benefiting from it, so.
And this grant money she's sought out on her own?
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, the, it's tobacco money, and a lot of money from these, these corporations or these organizations that need to. And, you know, it's just the sky's the limit with what funding we can get, used particularly in, in a CTC or a program for anti-tobacco and anti-drugs, so.
Keep going after it. I think that's a practice we've always encouraged from council to all staff and all departments is to, to look for free money, those grants.
Just leveraging what we have.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll move to approve the, oh, man, that's twice.
Did you want this?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry to steal from you.
Okay, so then I move to approve the communities' care agreement amendment as presented.
I second.
Yeah, but motion by Councilmember Houli, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'll pass that along to Jamie. Your kind words, council. All right, we're on to item number 11. This is a review and action item to authorize the Alpine School District to dispose of some property.
So with this new legislation that came out on the school district splits, it requires any disposal of property by the school districts has to be approved by the cities that will be the new reorganized district. This is one of the homes that is remodeled or built by the CTE Career Technical Education Program that Alpine School District runs. They have students go in and, and build or remodel these homes, and then they sell the properties. And what they've indicated at the district is that then those funds go back into the program. We did create this resolution. And then what's in your packet is the letter from the district requesting this approval to sell it. They do have a buyer on hand that's signed some commitments to purchase the property. And so they're asking for the permission to do so. Pleasant Grove is meeting, I believe, tonight on this issue. Vaneard has already passed something with their city council. Orem passed this with the caveat that they are requesting that the funding go towards a new property within our district area. And so I've communicated with their city manager and said, well, if, I don't know if Alpine can commit to that. If, if their response is no, does that mean your approval is invalid? And he said that's basically how the Orem City Council reacted. And so just an FYI, we may have to rehash this a little bit. So if Alpine says they can't accommodate their next project in our area.
Is there just one home project per year district-wide? Or do they do multiple?
They do one in the north and one in the south.
Oh, so maybe that will work out.
And that's why it should work out. In fact, in all the time I was at Pleasant Grove High, the, the homes were either in Orem or I think one was in PG. They're usually in the area north and south.
There was one in Linden one year, I remember.
What about, what about the west side? Do they?
They're north. No, I don't know that. And this property is being sold here in our area, so that's why they're doing this. They're not going to ask west or, or north. But it, it's a great program, and, and I'd love to see it stay here as well. But I don't think I'd feel comfortable putting a caveat on it. It's still district money and district is as it is currently constituted. So those funds have come from the entire district. So in my thinking, it should go back to the entire district until we are formally a new district.
And I want to just make sure I clarify. We answered an email when you first kind of sent this out. And that was not me saying this is what I want. That was me saying, if I, you know, I, I like to hear pros, I like to hear cons. I threw up one con, not that I agreed with it. I'm 100% behind this, and I wouldn't put a caveat on it.
So if you're comfortable as it is, the resolution doesn't have any, any stipulations, it would just be the city council approving Alpine School District's request to sell and transfer the property?
I'm happy to make a motion unless someone wants to beat me to it. I move to approve Resolution 2025-3, our authorizing Alpine School District to dispose of property as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion? All right, seen none, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Just fun food for thought. This is within, it's very close to the house I grew up in.
Oh, wow.
Look like the house you grew up in?
No, not at all.
All right, we are on to item number 12. This is also a review and action on planning commission reappointments. So we have a couple commissioners who, their terms have come to the end, and so I'll have.
Yeah, planning commissioners are appointed for three-year terms. So Jared Showers and Scott Thompson have agreed to continue on. The mayor recommended that they be brought forth to the council for your consideration. And then that second page thereafter, the intro, has that memo from Mike listing the terms there, current expiration. So just a recommendation to reappoint Jared and Scott.
And for your information, I did ask Michael Florence, our planning, you know, community development, his opinion, and he, he very much enjoys working with these individuals and gave, gave his desire that he would like to continue with them as well, if that's any help.
I, I try and come to every one of the planning commission meetings, and both of those people have such great thoughts and great input and great insight. Sure enjoy having them on board.
Yeah, very pleased they were willing to continue, yeah.
All right, sounds like a matter of quick housekeeping then. Lincoln, you're getting pointed out. This is your assignment.
I move to approve the reappointment of Jared Showers and Scott Thompson as planning commissioners with three-year terms as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Jacobs, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you so much, council. And we appreciate their, their good service there on the planning commission. All right, that brings us to item number 13. This is a review and action for a traffic study review. Turn this over to staff again.
Yeah, so on, as you're aware, we've received a general plan land use change application request by David Gardner, who's here tonight. And there was discussion in prior presentations about a potential traffic study. The city engineer, Noah Gordon, contacted and reached out to a handful of traffic engineers. This is what they specialize in, is looking at, at roads and looking at models that project traffic flow on future roadways or traffic patterns and issues associated with developments. He is recommending that the city contract with Hales Engineering was the low bidder, $5,750 to perform a traffic study on the 1200 East roadway to determine, this is going to give, I think the city council is going to give you better data to make a good decision on this roadway. You could get numbers that, or recommendations from this traffic engineer that says, you know what? I don't think this road is needed. And you could get other data that says it's going to carry X amount of vehicles, and it's going to be beneficial. It's going to take traffic off of other streets. So it's information that, talking with Noah, he thinks would be beneficial. He mentions that he feels confident in any of these firms, but that he would just recommend going with the low bidder, Hales Engineering. Part of this discussion here for you tonight is to determine, should the city bear the cost of this study? Or is this something that the applicant, that's requesting the road be removed off the master plan map, should cover some or any of the costs, so.
Do you know, Noah, when I look at the subject line, it says 1200 East, does that include the 800 North section as well? Or is this just?
Does.
Okay.
Yeah, so he, he had a meeting with these firms, Noah and Trent, and met with them and described the scope of what's being looked at. And then he asked for specifically to look at also 400 East and what the traffic count differences may be if 1200 East goes in, to factor that into traffic on 400 East as well, and so.
Here's going to be a question that I, I'm curious if you have the answer to. When these companies, these engineering firms do traffic studies, and they make their projections, do they ever go back later and see how they did? To know what, what level of confidence do we have with the report that then comes? The, and I realize they're going to use, and I've read their, what they use for their criteria to help determine their data. But I'm just curious if they ever go back and see how close.
Standard deviation with their.
I don't know the answer to that, Van. Yeah, I'm not certain, so.
All right, great questions. Maybe if there's additional caveats to the scope of work that you think would be pertinent, that's something to get back to staff. I would just like to make my personal opinion on the second thing on this review and action item. I think this should be a cost borne by the city, especially in the instance where this is something that's been on our master plan for so many decades. I think it's in our best interest to make a data-driven decision to, if any funds were to be expended to pull the trigger on this significant infrastructure, I think the city should bear that cost to determine, you know, when it's applicable or still of a benefit. So that would be my opinion on that second item.
It's mine as well.
I share that opinion as well.
Like Double Jeopardy, if applicants made a, a payment on. Like double jeopardy, if applicants made a payment on, on requesting this and to throw that back on them for this as well seems.
I guess my question is this, I still hold firm that this is, this road's 30 years out. And so is this study, traffic study, going to help us? I, I guess it helps in making the decision from this application. I don't think it helps us in deciding when to put in the road because the, the data will be, I, I guess is, does the traffic study give data for the future?
So he asks, he saw Hales Engineering will create a map exhibit showing the 2050 volumes with and without the proposed connection along these roadways. So they are looking at, in the future, hey, this is what they would estimate this road may carry as far as traffic volumes.
And to your question, Jake, also, if you remember when we did the open house presentation, it was mentioned that the completion of it is potentially extremely long-range, but there will be segments along the way that could be at sooner points created. And so that's where we need to determine, you know, alignments or what's going to be required for, you know, if we're planning on this, we need to do it accordingly as development might happen piecemeal.
You know, and part of my reason of the question of the accuracy, my parents own some land in another city, there was some potential development coming in. The developer paid for traffic studies. It was presented at a city council meeting and it was pretty much rejected completely by people at the meeting feeling like it was not accurate, wasn't right, wasn't, and I, I didn't know how to say yes, it's accurate, or no, it's, not, I was just an observer, wasn't participating. And so I'm curious if you proceed with this.
How accurate we're going to be?
Yes, is it, is it helpful information?
Level of faith?
I mean, I love the presentation and what they talk about and what they say they're going to provide. I think that is very helpful, but I'm just curious if it.
Yeah, I think back, I think back to the Songberg Cove development, they, that applicant provided a traffic study expert, if you might recall. And I think the residents didn't trust what he was presenting, but I think now anecdotally a lot of what he said would be the flow might be what actually happened, but numbers-wise, I, I couldn't say. It would be interesting to go back even on that one.
And so part of this too was, you know, some of it is measuring traffic data, which we have the ability to do in-house. I'm curious then if we go back to that development you're talking about there on the east side of State Street. If we go back and, just for fun, put data, you know, collect data and see how close.
Yeah, with Hales, I'm happy to ask them that question, see what they say. And, I mean, these, these are professional, Hales specifically, they specialize in transportation engineering. And so this is their, their profession is just transportation engineering. And so that, that's where I'm assuming that they must have a decent track record because we've, I've seen Hales for 20 years, and so.
And I'm not going to argue that they're not the best at what they do. I also remember a meeting where we were getting some projections on growth for into the future, and somebody asked, someone of the residents asked the question, how accurate have you been? And they said, to be fair, we haven't been accurate. We've been always way under what actually happened, what, what they would project. The population growth was so much more, so anyway, just see if Hales has any.
What's your track record?
I think you have to.
And if you verify.
They have now are, I was quite shocked, there was a particular software presentation that we had. Every one of us have a phone in our pocket now. They're, they can see our, they are tracking every single place we go every minute. And this is data, you know, the person who owns the phone is supposed to not be revealed, but there, there are software programs now that all, all kinds of entities use, like just think of even commercial entities to determine, you know, a market analysis. They see all the cell phone data of where everyone's going in their trips and everywhere they go, and sometimes even where, how much they spent and what they did, how long they stayed there. It's pretty crazy.
Yeah, I turn it off. I turn my phone off every time I drive, so. Not tracking. One, one other comment I wanted to make is you also have to filter the information that they give you. They don't have a crystal ball, none of us do, right? I've been looking at the Linden City, I was looking at some 1975 photos, and there's, there's, there's just no houses. There's a couple farmhouses above the canal, right? And, and one of the developments that went in, Glenn Cook developed, it went bankrupt, right? It just didn't even move. But then WordPerfect, Novell, the IT industry exploded down here and everything exploded. So the data that they give, they can't foresee, right, we're housing crisis that's going on right now, and we're just at the beginning of that. Hopefully it'll shift and we'll focus on something else socially, but we just have to filter what they give.
Adam, do you think that it'll tell us where the vehicles are coming from? One of the arguments that have been discussed is, are these, are these Linden residents or are they, are they Orem and Pleasant Grove?
Yeah, I thought, thought that was in his.
Is that in the scope?
In his scope.
I didn't see it in the tasks necessarily you called out, but.
Yeah, we will estimate the proportion of traffic using 1200 East that is regional cut-through as opposed to local Linden-based traffic. So that's probably as good as they'll get.
Okay. And it certainly could be just best practices, these are the best predictions.
Right.
Have the responsibility of looking for today and tomorrow. I don't see how having this data can hurt us.
Right.
Right, so it's, what are we talking, a $5,000 bill? Wasn't that what their estimate was at?
57.
Hales, 57? You know, if I'm thinking of this 57 just for today, well, you know, that's a bit of money, but if I, if I look at it for a 30-year period, it's, it's, it's good data. It's always good data.
All right, counsel, good comments all around.
Just one more caveat on this, so there, Hales said they are out three weeks from when they get told yes on this. And so the planning commission meeting is actually scheduled in a week or two. So whether or not the planning commission, they will not have this, so my, my gut is if they know we've ordered this study, they may continue that meeting, just a heads-up, David, so.
And I think, we have time here, and I'd rather have all the data possible.
They still need, they still need. Another time before the city council is making the final decision though, right? So they could still.
Right, so this just may bump it out a couple weeks, but nothing malicious or anything. This is just scheduling, so.
Adam, sorry to interrupt, do they have a timeframe for how long this study takes?
They told us three weeks on, on their turnaround.
For three weeks out and takes three weeks.
If you pull up that screen, you'll see right there, schedule.
Sorry, the timeframe was three, sorry.
Let's go.
Up one?
Go, go up a page or slide the whole thing down. Yeah, there you go.
If they receive the notice, proceed for use in January 28th. They said they could have it. That does make sense.
Yeah, so the, the dates kind of threw me off. That was going to be one of my questions. But I kind of took it, it's going to take three weeks.
Yeah, they had told Noah it would take three weeks to complete their study, so.
That was meant to say February 22nd.
Maybe that's what it meant was.
And, and you said Noah was the one that was reaching out?
So Noah and Trent reached out to several traffic engineers, engineering consultant, Hales, Avenue and Horrocks, and these were the three that responded with proposals.
But they have, they feel good about this?
Yes, he says, based on the proposals, he says any of them would do great, and so he says just take the lowest bid.
The lowest bid did have a calibration as well, though, so it was, it seemed to be
All right, anything else in your review, counsel? The only thing I would maybe, would like the engineering staff to share with Hales, if that is the, the one that gets the bid award, is to maybe share the scope of work that the other company offered, just to make sure we're not missing any little caveats in there.
Okay. Yeah, my assumption is they had a meeting with, with all of these at the same time, so they heard the same information, but as far as the requested scope, so.
Yeah, and all three proposals are there with what they're proposing.
Just so we have a full comprehensive analysis that, you know, we don't miss a data point that another company would have provided in the report. All right, counsel, I'd entertain a motion if there's no further questions regarding this item.
Okay.
I was scrolling up, sorry.
Yeah, me too.
Or down.
There it is. I move to recommend that a traffic study shall be completed, says prior to the planning commission, but should be completed regarding the 1200 East roadway, general plan change, and that the cost of this study shall be paid for by the city.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. We have a motion on the table. Any further comments or questions regarding the motion? All right, seen done, we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you. We'll get that moving forward. All right, this now brings us to item number 14. We are going to be going into a closed session as allowed per Utah Code 52-4-205 for the discussion of purchase or sale of real property and pending or possible litigation.
We'll have a 90-second break.
All right, we will first do a quick recess, well, we'll do a quick, we'll do a quick recess and right back.
They're recessed, whether they, whether we allow it.